These are eyes for the pledge of allegiance.
Good evening, I'll call the October eleventh select board meeting to order. We'll accept the agenda, I don't believe that there are any changes and move. Sure.
To announce.
Sure, so our select board meetings being audio and video recorded. The May seventh twenty twenty four annual town meeting warrant is now open for citizen warrant articles submittals through November thirteenth twenty twenty three at four P M and those go to the town clerk's office. We are having our second seasonal information session on the November seventh twenty twenty three special town meeting short term rental articles, that's going to be via remote participation on Zoom webinar. And it is tomorrow, October twelfth at five thirty P M, you have to register to attend. And that registration link is on the agenda. The D P W is going to be hosting a latex paint collection day on Saturday, October twenty first from nine to noon at the D P W garage at one eighty eight Mannequin Road. Special Town Meeting is going to be Tuesday, November seventh twenty twenty three at five P M at the Nantucket High School Mary P Walker Auditorium at ten Surfside Road. And. Um, we were going to announce applications received for committee vacancies for our round three. We did advertise for the Council on Aging Real Estate Assessment Committee and Tree Advisory Committee, but we didn't receive any applications for those. So it's just going to be the Cultural Council and I am having issues opening my agenda packet, so if somebody wouldn't mind reading those five names that we have for two seats, that would be awesome. I um, the Cultural Council applicants.
I can read it.
Thank you.
Um, Darcy Volfe, Kit Murphy, Olivia Valhos, Bethany Oliver and Barbara Tibbetts. I'm sorry if I didn't say anyone's name. But those are the applications for the two seats available.
Thank you, and then select board announcements or comments before we start?
Anyone? Yes, Brooke.
I encourage everyone to look at the webpage on the Police Chief search where there is some updated information about the three finalists for the Police Chief. For your, the community's review.
Thank you, anybody else? Okay, I don't believe there's any follow up from prior meetings. This is on public comment portion of our agenda next for items otherwise not on our agenda for discussion. Please come up and state your name for the record.
Good evening, Kathy Baird, and I'm here for the Advisory Committee of Non-Voting Taxpayers. Just quickly, I know we sent a letter into you this week, looking to see if we could get an ex officio membership on the Town Council Study Committee. We submitted a name at the suggestion of Libby Gibson, she said that she thought we should have a voice on that on that board because we do have, we do have a voice right now that's in the bylaws for this town government. And we're just wanting to make sure that that stays, that we still have a voice going forward and whatever kind of government is chosen to go forward. So that's what we were looking for, I, I'm not sure what the response will be, but I just wanted to be here in person to, to request that. We have a number of members who are actually, where we live are in town council governments, so we have, we have a lot of experience in those kinds of governments that we could share. And, and also, we're supposed to be providing guidance from the interests of the non-voting taxpayers, not looking for a vote or anything like that, just to make sure that we continue to have a voice. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. Is there anyone else? I don't see any hands.
If it wasn't for the non-voting taxpayers, we would have paved Main Street. So their voice is important. I don't know if everyone knows that story, but.
Well, we'll get back to you on public comment. Okay, um, next up, there's no new business, approval of minutes and warrants.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries unanimously. Citizen Departmental Committee requests and reports, the Housing Office requests for approval and execution of a, it's actually approval and acceptance, right? Of a unit deed, so there was one change to the agenda, of the unit deed and settlement statement in connection with the town's acquisition of nineteen B First Way. Tucker?
Thanks very much, Madam Chair. The board's familiar, this is an acquisition which they previously approved, this is sort of the final documentation before we go to close and we have Attorney Marsh here to go through details and any questions that you may have about this final documentation.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Pardon me?
Good evening.
Good evening, I'm sorry, I couldn't wait for a minute. So I have forwarded to you a copy of the unit deed for this property, an acceptance of the deed and the settlement statement for this property and closing. The property is being purchased by the town for nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars and it is going to be able to be leased to municipal employees if the town so desires. It is a mast, has a master deed and declaration of trust governing the condominium trust, this property is a duplex so that each unit has fifty percent interest in the condominium and they are sharing exclusive, they're sharing the areas of the property outside of the building as well as the structure of the building and roof and will share expenses for the condominium structure. The units themselves have also exclusive areas for their use outside as well as to reserve parking spaces. And so before you is also an acceptance of the deed and a settlement statement that just outlines the closing costs for both the seller and the buyer and the child. Do you have any questions?
Does anyone have questions?
Everything looked in order, I'll move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That carries unanimously, thank you both.
Thank you very much, good evening.
Next up, we have the Town Managers Report, the Water Main Expansion Project West of Nantucket Memorial Airport Update and Review of Anticipated Fall twenty twenty three, Spring twenty twenty four Construction Schedule. Greg Tippman.
Good evening, meeting is cruising fast. Even before would be almost gone. Good evening, thank you. This is a project that the board is very well aware of, this is an update from our internal committee or internal work group who has been working on this project for over two and a half years. As a reminder, this is the S R F funded project to address potential PFAS contamination west of Nantucket Memorial Airport. This is not the airports project, this is the town's voluntary project. This was first brought to the select board on July seventh twenty twenty one. Since then, this is our eighth time coming back to the board in one capacity or another to either update the board on the project or to seek approval for a contract. And we did, of course, go to town meeting in twenty twenty two to seek funding, nine million dollars, which included a ballot vote to secure the project. So this project is getting ready to begin, we're about a month away, we hope, in order to actually start construction on the project. So it was timely to come before the board with our members of our project team, the project team is very large. And with us tonight, we have, of course, Erica Mooney, the Operations Administrator, who has been very instrumental in, you know, boots on the ground with easements and takings and the warrant articles and utility coordination and Vicky Marsh, who also is very, very instrumental in getting this underway. We have Chuck Larson, who is our project, special projects manager, who's also an engineer, who's been our engineer for this project to help oversee the, the plans. And then, of course, we have Florence Urulo, our Public Outreach, our Communications Manager, who has been doing a stellar job with our website and our president, and she will show a little bit more of that today. And we also have with us, of course, Mark Willett, who is the Water Department Director, who is ultimately the project manager for this project. The designs have been completed by C D M Smith, they were our design engineers. And our project, our construction phase engineers are, are representatives, are Environmental Partners Group, P P G. So with us this evening, we have Ziad Carey, who is the principal on the project, as well as Francesca Brilla, who is a senior project engineer. So I think I kind of got the overview of the project and as I said, we've been before you guys many times with it. So maybe we can kick it over to Ziad from E P G to give an overview.
So we're going so fast, Ziad isn't on yet, but Francesca is, and she's going to screen share and lead us through the presentation.
Thank you, Francesca.
Hi, everyone, thank you, Greg. I'm just going to screen share here, let me know if you guys can see this.
Yes, thanks.
Yes.
Perfect. So yep, I'm going to be speaking on behalf of Ziad Carey, who's the senior principal on the project, as Greg said. I'm the senior project engineer for the project with Environmental Partners. And we're doing this public outreach session as part of the select board meeting today for the Water Main Expansion Project. Today, we are going to be going over a little bit about the project description and need, where exactly the project is located, what to expect from construction and from this project and its outcomes. We're going to talk about the construction schedule and then we'll open the floor to any questions anyone might have. Diving into the project description and need. Just a little bit of the summary of work, what the project entails. So there's three main parts of this project, the first being the water main work, which is about fourteen thousand linear feet of water main. That also includes ninety six water services to all the properties on those roads and twenty seven new fire hydrants. There's a drainage portion of this project that includes a small piece of removing existing drainage and replacing it on Nobodyer Way, connecting to the existing drainage system in that area. There's also a few precast basins, leach and catch basins and PVC drainage proposed on Skyline Drive as part of this project, just to address some of the localized flooding issues on that road. And then final, the final piece of the project is the restoration piece, which will include trench with pavement for Okawa Avenue and Monahan St. Road, as well as Millen Overlay for Nobodyer Way and Webster Road and full depth reclamation on Skyline Drive. Looks like Ziad is with us, yeah, did you want to keep going, I'll keep sharing my screen?
No, I'm sorry I'm late, just keep going, it's good.
Okay, so basically, the need for this project, just to go over a little bit of that, what stemmed the need for this project. The project's going to provide water service, as we said, to those ninety six properties along these roadways. These properties currently have domestic wells that, as Greg said, are potentially impacted by PFAS contamination west of the airport. So this project will look to expand this water system and connect to the work conducted under the twenty twenty one Airport Water Extension Project, which many of you probably are familiar with. So, yeah, these new water mains will provide better looping and hydraulic capacity of the water system as well as increasing public safety with the addition of the fire hydrants that I mentioned before. I think Greg mentioned that this is a Massachusetts Drinking Water State Revolving Fund Program project, so the project has received eight point three million dollars of funding, zero percent interest. And diving into a little bit about the project locations, there are six main roadways that the water main will be constructed on, that includes Lover's Lane, Okawa Avenue, Skyline Drive, Monahan St. Road, Webster Road and Nobodyer Way. We have a little figure here, I know it might be a little hard to see, but it shows how the new system is going to connect to the Airport Extension Project, which is in red, and then the existing piping within the town system, which is in blue. And this project you can see in green and the numbers represent the anticipated sequence of construction at this time, which as you can see, Nobodyer Way is first, followed by Monahan St. Road and Webster Street. And then moving on to Overwa Avenue and then lastly Lover's Lane.
Sorry to interrupt, so basically, on my way driving from the Cape, I got a call from the contractor and what we're going to do, we're going to upgrade and then update this figure, so there's a total of eleven sequences, it's really the same locations. Except the, the sequence have changed a little bit based on the feedback from the contractor, so what we'll do, we'll update the figure on this presentation and we'll post it on the, on the website. It's just a slight, one and two kind of stayed the same, it's just the sequence moving from one and then ending on Lover's Lane towards Tacoma, that changed a little bit along the way, but there's more detailed information to follow.
Thanks, Ziad. So a little bit about what to expect from this project, there's going to be equipment and material mobilization, so excavators and all the equipment and materials necessary to construct the water main. There's going to be some tree clearing and roadside mowing, particularly along Lover's Lane, but also along the other streets as well. The contractor will be on site, performing construction layout and field surveying, just to make sure everything is, you know, correctly designed and in the right location. Some of the roads will be closed to through traffic, but as always, accommodations will be made for resident access, residents will always be able to access their their driveways during construction and we'll be able to work with the contractor and the police details to make sure that's possible. Of course, it'll involve excavation of the trench and installation of the water main, backfilling of the trench and temporary trench paving, followed by final restoration. A few photos here, just to show what the water main installation may look like, this comes from a recent project that A P's done on island, so you can see here examples of water gate valve installation and water main installation. Typically, the construction moves pretty fast, it's only at a four foot depth, so the contractor is able to have a lot of production, you know, moving along the roadway in one day, they can do up to three hundred, four hundred feet per day. Some more example pictures of a project that we've done, fire hydrant installation, temporary trench paving, so the roads will always be left in passable conditions as we await final restoration, so there's an example of a temporary trench patch on the right there. Talk a little bit about the construction schedule. The schedule was designed to bring expedited water service to residents and the town has pre-procured materials to advance the project even further. So all the materials are already in, the water main are, the water department already has possession of all those materials. The project was bid on June twenty ninth and it was awarded to C C Construction, who's out of Plymouth. The anticipated start date, I don't know, Ziad, maybe you have an update, an exact date from the contractor, since we've.
No update, it's basically towards the end of October, early November, but most likely towards the end of October, to be confirmed.
To be confirmed and exact date, but like Ziad said, end of October, early November. And the contract end date is May twenty fourth twenty twenty five, which allows us time for a final expiration of the roadways as we went over. And there will be a summer shutdown period between June thirtieth and the second Monday in September to allow for the summer season and everyone to be able to enjoy their time on island during that time. And with that, I will open up for questions, does anyone have any questions about this project?
Any question?
Yeah, one question and one comment, I'll do the comment first, is once the fire hydrants are in, all the neighbors should notify their insurance because you get, if you're in within X feet of a fire hydrant, your insurance rate is better, so that's going to be a positive for everybody, I know they've had a difficult time there and it's a little nice thing. The other one is, where will the fire hydrants be sited? We've had projects sometimes and the project has finished and been tarred and there's a fire hydrant two feet on a bike path or something. Are these all set so they won't be, we want to just, my suggestion is make sure that they're all not in the way. That they are, you know, off the bike paths, off the main area, so. I don't need to know exactly, but that's, we've had some funny things happen over the years.
So I don't know if, if you mentioned upfront, so obviously, this is a C D M Smith design. The town retained E P, we did a cursor review of the alignment, I'm not sure if this was discussed upfront, but you know, we worked with Chuck, the Water Department Mark, and basically looked at an alignment that's going to be favorable moving forward, meaning less restoration that would allow the town to implement additional utilities in the future within the roadway, you know, like the drainage and some other utilities. So all that in mind, you know, the, the hydrants are set at, you know, favorable distances, no, no more than four, five hundred feet apart and they're located off the edge of the road where they're accessible and they're not in the way of anything.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Did anybody else have questions?
My wife always says I state the obvious, so.
We have one here.
No, that was actually a good point, Matt, because concurrent with this is a roadway and bike path project, not part of our project, but also going on on these same streets. So it was a challenge for the, the project team, C D M Smith, to make sure that they, the utilities and hydrants and everything, we're not going to eventually be in the way of a bike path and everything. So it's, it has been thought out along the way, so I appreciate that. Also want to point out that Nora Carburg, the Airport Director, is here. He's also been a great part of our project team in case there's any questions regarding the existing airport project and of course, if Noah, if you have anything you want to add to our discussion here. And we also have we have Florence Urulo, our Communications Manager, who wants to show everybody the project website and explain to the public how to sign up for updated information about where the project is daily.
Sorry.
Yeah, but Florence, I'm just going to go to one public question from Chris Kinsley Hancock.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm wondering how this will impact mail delivery, if we have mailboxes on the side or the trenches are going to be dug?
So really shouldn't be, I don't know, Francesca had mentioned upfront, this is a simple water main project, really in construction, nothing is simple, I should say that, but it's a four feet deep from finished grade, that should be rather quick, so the crew will not be sitting in front of the specific property for a long duration of time. The main crew will come in, like similar to what we've been doing with the Silver Forest Main Project downtown, where we had Lily Street, Center Street, Step Lane, all those were shut down for a long period of time. But between the police details, the crew on site, and we have a full-time resident engineer available at all times. You know, between all these entities on the job, you know, delivering mails, delivering, your communication is key, like propane deliveries downtown was something that we dealt with for the last year, year and a half, and this will continue, continue to be, you know, managed the same way. So mail delivery, propane deliveries, utilities, all that stuff will not be interrupted.
Okay, thank you.
Erica?
Yeah, Chris, I just wanted I live on Skyline Drive, I filed a disclosure, by the way. When the airport did its water expansion project down Monahan St. Road on a, and on a portion of Skyline Drive, it did not impact mail delivery or services. So sometimes they just had to go around the other way, but mail was delivered and packages came and.
Okay.
So.
So we, we don't have to recite our mailbox and.
They'll take it out, usually when they get to your section, they'll pop it out maybe for a day and then they'll put it right back in.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We've also made contingencies for school buses.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, hi, Erica, can I show my screen? Is that okay? Okay. So we have a webpage dedicated to the bigger project and different faces of it, and one for face one. It's very easy to find if you type nantucket dot sheme dot gov slash surfside twenty five. You'll land this page or you can have access to it via our main website as well. And I just wanted to ask people that live in the area mostly to get familiarized with the page, we update it very frequently and we hope to let people know via the website about road closures, traffic disruption, changes to the schedule, so all the information that residents may need will be in these pages. It is very easy to share with others if you want and also to email the responsible for the project, just by clicking here. And you can also share in social media, it can be translated to our languages, and if we in the future, we may have questions to the community that we will be posting here and you will be able to to share with us your questions and concerns as well, so it's a very useful, loaded with information website, so yep. Just wanting to remind people that we have this tool and hopefully they find information, the information useful, and if you have any questions, you can also email us at communications@nantucket the sheme dot gov and we'll make sure to, to share your questions with with anyone that can answer, your Ziad or Francesca or Mark in this case. But nantucket dot sheme dot gov slash surfside twenty five, you will land here and then you can see the different faces and the timeline I see right now, and in face one, the presentation that we see today, it's it is posted right now on face one, so you can access to it. Maybe it's in the page, that's it.
Thank you, Florence. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, everybody.
Next up, we have select boards reports and comments, clarification as to voting status of ex officio members of Town Council Study Committee. And this came up in regard to some, some people not being sure what ex officio meant, if that was being appointed from the specific board or whether we meant for them to be non-voting. And in, in my mind, I thought we were doing nine people that were all voting. So we just wanted to clarify that at a public meeting. Okay, just making sure no one disagrees.
I'm fine.
And getting it out there. Will be voting members. As would, would their alternates be in their place? Then next up, we have a discussion regarding establishment of a licensing board. Is Brian Riley on?
Brian is not, but John Giorgio will be revealed.
Oh, okay. Hi, John. We have a letter in the pack in regard to this. We, we were also discussing earlier today giving a try what we had talked about at, at our last workshop meeting. Having an additional meeting once a month during, during the day to do licensing and utility petitions. And see how that goes. And see kind of, you know, how much need is there for a separate licensing board, if we could have a little, a Zoom meeting once a month and we get it, things done in half an hour to an hour. Does that make more sense?
And I'm sure it seems to be a lot too, when those particular meetings are scheduled.
Yes.
Because it always seems like we have licensing at a time where we have something really important to talk about. So it's a scheduling issue as well.
I mean, Madam Chair.
Yes, Brooke, go ahead.
So as I recall the conversation we had at our governance workshop, that we, we did, we had that, that joint meeting with a lot of other commissions and it felt really good to be together with other boards and groups that are doing work that intersects with our priorities in the strategic plan and this idea came up as an opportunity to free up more space in our Wednesday night agendas for those kind of collaborative meetings and long-term planning discussions and put the technical licensing stuff in a once a month meeting. Because that, you know, more often than not, we move through them pretty quickly and they just absorb time that we could be using on a Wednesday night where the public's more watching and also the thought that it's more accessible to business owners who are applying for licenses or renewals to come during the workday instead of having to sit through a three-hour meeting waiting for the licensing to come up.
Erica?
I will, sorry, I will note, I started going through all the agendas for the last year, trying to see how many meetings you have, I wasn't able to complete that because there was actually quite a lot, I got about six months through. And so I'll be able to hopefully complete that by tomorrow and send it around to the board, just so you can see. But it's, it's a decent amount. just to, so you can see, um, but it's, it's a decent amount.
And and when the public hearings, you've got to open them and close them every time, it adds up, that's the.
So as to the licensing board.
Yes.
Question, this was something that I had raised that I um wanted to put on the agenda to see if it was, it was of interest to the board to consider um how we might um shift those responsibilities to another board altogether. Um, and how that would, how we could make effect that change legally if we were inclined to do that. And um for me, um, again, sort of procedural matters, taking time where we could be doing more planning um and strategic um implementation rather than um nuts and bolts, procedural matters. And do we have enough to warrant a separate board? What could that board, what could we task with that board? And then I think the other question really is that there is a, to some degree, at times, there are policy implications of individual licensing decisions. And I think the biggest example that I've come across since I've been on the board is a liquor license in a new location, that kind of thing. And, and so um particularly around liquor licenses and other things that, you know, if we um hand off that responsibility, are we then taking our voices out of um things that have long-term policy implications? And do we want to do that? So that's sort of the debate I have in my head around this. Um, but we have a complex government to run and having more time on the less procedural stuff feels like it's worth investigating. That's kind of where this came up, so I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Um, if, I mean, obviously, we know, we see what the procedure is, so it's going to mean going to, going through town meeting, um, which is fine, but I think it might be a good idea to try having meetings for like six months of us doing this um on like a, what, what we were talking about, you know, a Monday or a Thursday or something in the middle of the day. Um, and seeing how much time it actually takes.
Um, do you, do you want John to review what it would take for some people who haven't read the packet?
Yeah, yeah, we can go through that, but um I was ju- just saying to, to see before we propose an article to town meeting, how much time we're actually spending on licensing if we just do a separate meeting? And um, and really, it would be, it would be an easier meeting if somebody needed to miss because we, we need three people there. Um.
And I'm sure we could always uh propose an article and do our time up till next May with these meetings and always withdraw it.
Yep, exactly. So um, John, did, did you want to um go through the process?
Sure, thank you, um, good evening, everyone. So in order to establish a separate licensing board, uh you would have to amend the charter. Uh, and um that would, we, we would, um, that would have to be a special act charter amendment, which is typically what you all do when you amend the charter. Um, it would be a relatively simple change. You would um establish a licensing board. You would um want to determine the number of uh com- um board members um who would appoint them. And you would want to include um a, a list of the kinds of licenses that this board would have jurisdiction over. Um, you know, licensing commissions a- at the city level um are very common. Uh, because you could imagine that the sheer numbers of licenses that would come before, you know, the city of Boston, for example. So they have their own licensing commission. There's no similar process for towns, um although you can certainly do it through a charter amendment. Um, if you're interested in knowing how a licensing board works, um, I could point you in the direction of the town of Provincetown, that by charter has a separate licensing board. Um, you know, unlike the situation you have with the historic district commission, um, I shouldn't say unlike, but as you know, with the historic district commission, there's, there's an appeal process. Or any person aggrieved by a decision of the H D C can do an administrative appeal to the select board. Um, I suppose it's theoretically possible that you could include that if you wanted to in your charter amendment, but um I, I, I'm not sure I would even recommend that, given the amount of time those appeals take, at least with the H D C. And so I think to Brooke's point, the question is, would the select board be comfortable essentially stepping out of the licensing process altogether, uh and leaving that to a separately appointed? Although you could make them elected as well if you so desired to do that. Um, so that would be something that we could draft from you with appropriate direction, and then you would have to decide um some of the key points in terms of what you want to see in this licensing board. Assuming it's approved at the Maytown meeting, um, it would go to the legislature for enactment. Um, and then we would take it from there.
Brooke.
John, does the board then have any ability to direct such a board in terms of policy or um recommend, uh, I don't, directions on that? I'm thinking around liquor licenses or something about the expansion or location of liquor licenses. Does then the, does the select board, I guess you, you manage that through who gets appointed, right?
Yeah, I mean, you could, you could have some kind of a policy role set forth in this charter amendment, Brooke, I suppose, um, where the board could um recommend licensing policies and regulations to the licensing board. But I think for this to actually work effectively, and I say effectively, meaning to remove this work from the docket of the select board, you would probably want this licensing to commission, commission to be fairly independent. Um, and so any, and any, to say, any person aggrieved by a decision of the licensing board would appeal to the, could appeal to the A B C C, as is the current practice, and or an appeal through court. But that would all be sp- spelled out in the amendment, um, if you decided to go this route. Yes, and you can always put a member of this board on that board. Yes.
Okay.
I kind of, my thought is that it probably would be more influenced by, you know, the licensing person for the town. Uh, you know, Amy's doing a good job in giving us all the background and, and saying, here's how many licenses, et cetera. I remember other times it wasn't as, as complete, and so it made it hard to ma- you know, make the right decisions sometimes. I think it's, you know, I, so I think whether, rather, maybe rather than us being inserted, maybe it's through staff, sort of, you know, making sure that the right recommendations and the past history is provided. I think that's, you know, we've had trouble with this one, we have it with that one, you know, that kind of stuff, I think is, you know, in, in the same thing, because you could say, well, we want to make sure that you, you don't get a rogue board. We don't appoint a rogue board or a rogue board doesn't get voted, that happens here. We've had, we've had boards here that gave the store away, gave every license that was approved, came in front of them. So I think, you know, that can happen as much with us as it can with a, another board, another, a separate licensing board might not share our views, so.
Uh, Matt, if I may, you could also insert into this amendment a procedure for oversight in terms of removing license, uh licensing board members for cause. Um, you could, you know, you probably would want to have that in, in any event. While that's a pretty extraordinary uh remedy, it is something we could potentially write into the charter amendment.
I'm sure. John, I see that Provincetown has a seven-member licensing board. Can you, can, are they appointed by the Provincetown Select Board?
Yes, I believe they are, Tom.
Okay, thank you.
But as I said, you could make them elected, that would be another option.
It's an option, but getting enough people to run would be a challenge, perhaps.
No, I think, I think appointment would make more sense.
So, so I guess the question is, do we want to think about drafting something for twenty twenty-four town meeting? And then go do the other, having a separate meeting concurrent with that drafting process, and then make a decision whether to add it to the warrant or not? Farther along, do we want to invest the time in that? Are, are we feeling like it's a direction we want to go like this?
I'm comfortable with that.
I don't, I don't think we need, I would do the, have the meetings and not ask town council or staff to do anything until we know we really want to do it. If we make this change and it works, then why have people, not that we're asking for a lot, you know, a lot, but a bunch of little things becomes a lot, so.
It's more meetings to manage and so forth.
Yeah, that'll be more.
Um, I mean, of course, we're asking for one more meeting, but. I don't know, I'm just, I, I, I'm, I'm not sure yet, and I'd like to ha- have a couple of me, of extra meetings to do this and see how much time it really takes.
Um, two things, so in looking at the calendar, if you want this to be an online meeting, um Tuesdays and Thursdays are not good days. Um, they're already very full with all our regular committee work. Um, Mondays are actually pretty good, especially the fourth Monday of the month. I'd have to coordinate with Amy about making sure that licensing stuff is scheduled for that date. Um, and in, in just my preliminary start to the list, um, it's not every month that's really busy. Um, obviously, there are certain times of year, especially in um the spring, March, April, when everybody's um doing transfers or new licenses and the annual renewals. Um, so i- it, it's tough to say, do you have enough for every month? There's definitely some times where it's for sure worth it. Um, but I'll continue working on that list.
The other element of this is we have a town council study committee that may recommend completely revamping our form of government. So it almost feels like go, moving this along now almost doesn't really make sense if we can try this other thing. Separate meetings for a while.
Okay, I mean, we, we don't need to set the warrant until the very end of January. So I, I think it's worth, I know, but I think it's worth just um scheduling a meeting for next month to try this.
So we're going to have to, like Erica said, take a look at what might be pending and maybe already advertised or already looked, looked at. We're going to have to figure out what the advertising requirements are, what applications might be pending. And um, so I guess we can shoot for next month, but it's also going to need be, need to be a little outreach and education to people who routinely file license applications, so let them know that we're going to try out something new, and it won't be a regular Wednesday meeting. Just, so I'm just saying, let's hope for the best for next month.
And, and obviously, we're talking about this at a later in the month, so next week, you already have your licensing meeting. You know, your public hearing Wednesday, so those are already scheduled.
Right, no, under- understood that it will be a transition and that there might be something that needs to go on a Wednesday agenda because it's more urgent. Um, but let's just try to see what we have to do something next month.
I just, Madam Chair, make sure, I know we worked for someone to put a warrant together, but let's not wait too long so we don't find ourselves with nothing next May.
Okay, good discussion. And what, I mean, well, well, why don't we continue to bring that up as we're discussing warrant articles for next town meeting? Um, next up is committee reports. It's only six fifteen.
Before you, before you do your committee reports, can I just make one comment? Um, I did speak to the printer who was printing the special town meeting warrants. The printing job is done, meaning it's off the printer. It's still being cut and bound and stitched, um, but they are hoping to get it to the mail delivery company either Friday or Monday, and they should be out in the mail by the twentieth, which is our drop dead date to get those in the mail. So it looks like we're on schedule.
Great. Any committee reports? Okay, is there a final motion?
The teacher.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Harry unanimously, thank you, everyone.
Thanks, John.